Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Dartmouth Public Schools Budget Subcommittee Meeting today. I'm Dr. Gifford, the Superintendent of the Public School District. And as usual, we meet with our Subcommittee prior to then presenting our budget to the school committee, as well as working with the town on our proposal. We just wanted to let everyone know that even during tough times, we're hoping to be able to continue to secure enough funding to maintain the good work that we're doing and provide enough funding so that we can continue to ford ahead and offer our students an optimal education, as well as social emotional support. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Kylie, who obviously works very hard preparing this budget for us with the input from the rest of the district. Kylie?
Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Gifford. Today, I'm going to share this presentation with you. This will be the first opportunity that we've had to share publicly the FY22 budget, draft budget, where we are. So I will share that with you momentarily. So it has been an interesting year to prepare, to prepare a budget. There's uncertainty in every area of the operation, and it has been a difficult challenge to overcome. We, there's a lot we don't know still about what even next year is going to look like and what the remainder, how the remainder of this year is going to affect next year. So with all that said, we have to move forward and, you know, be flexible through this process and be ready to respond to the challenges ahead. And we think that, you know, this budget, you know, helps, helps us do that. Let's see. We, you know, Dr. Gifford spoke a little bit in her intro about, you know, our focus, and really, the focus is on kids. We're, this is our mission and vision and budget goal, and it's here for you to read. I won't read through it all, but our focus in this budget process and our decision-making is to try and support kids as best we can. It is never an easy thing to balance the needs of all the learners, and in this year, it's particularly difficult. But that is the focus for us, and make sure that we're strategic, making sure that we're strategic, and the way we do that is really the goal that I have for the budget process. So to do that, there's quite a few steps that need to take place in order to, you know, to meet that budget goal of being strategic and providing a quality education for all learners. So we start with school and department proposals before the holiday season. All our, all our principals and department heads provide thoughtful proposals that are focused on their improvement plans and focused on student achievement. We then, on my end, have to do all of the projections for things like staffing, utilities, transportation, other areas of the budget that are, you know, constantly evolving. We, we make those, those projections and build those into the initial draft budget. Then we look at all of the proposals and projections on a district-wide basis and try and focus our efforts as, with what the best possible scenario that we can bring forward to, you know, improve the schools and promote student achievement. So we sort of bring together all of those proposals from the departments and principals, as well as all the other items that, that are projected or known, and bring it together into one cohesive district-wide draft document. We then talk about it internally, and, you know, this year, I think, more than, more than ever, with having, having had to be so flexible for so long now, you know, our administrators in the district have understood that this is going to be a challenging process, that things that they may want to do, that may, you know, that are focused on improvement and students, may not be possible. That said, we still strive to figure out ways to shift resources and be strategic to support them, and you'll see that as we, as we go through this. So we, we try and work collaboratively toward building consensus, and that's a big part of what we're, you know, what we're here today, you know, having met with all the principals and department heads and talked about our proposal and what it's going to look like moving forward. And now, bringing it to you folks as budget Subcommittee members of the school committee, we hope to find some advocates who can, you know, who can help us get through this process, because this, this is clearly not going to be an easy process, and we can use all the help we can for, for, to meet these, these goals for kids. Expansion of communication and collaboration, so the budget Subcommittee, and then the school committee. So we'll, we'll look at the timeline of how that's all going to play out in a little bit. And then, making sure that we communicate the needs to the community. We normally do a budget Subcommittee meeting, and it's not very well attended. It is a public meeting. It's occasionally, we'll get somebody, but very infrequently. So we have an opportunity here, I think, you know, we have a, I'm sure we have an audience who's interested in this, or at least I hope so. So hopefully, we can begin that process of communicating our needs. So there are some key factors that really drive the formulation of this budget. Staffing is the number one factor. We are a people business, you know, we, we focus on students, and the way we do that by, you know, focusing on 3,500 students is with people. So obviously, that's going to be the biggest portion of our budget, and you'll, you'll see how that plays out on future slides. But our wage increase for FY22, for most people in the district, there is already a determined contractual obligation for 2.5% wage increase. There are other contractual increases, like steps, longevity, other things, lane changes, depending on academic achievements of staff members, that also play a role. And then, on the other side, there's retirements. This year, we had 13. Last year, we had nine. So this is up a little. 13, though, is more the, the norm, maybe even a little under average in the, in the grand scheme of maybe the 10 years that I've been here. But we do have 13 retirements, so we build in savings, depending on, you know, the position for replacement cost for those positions. Special ed tuition, it's, it is just, it's a very volatile area of the budget. It can, mostly because it can change very rapidly. It can change with, you know, one or two tuitions. And so that increase here for next year is projected to be approximately, is projected $400,000 increase. Part of that increase is the state approves a rate increase for each out-of-district provider. They do that every year. It's usually in the realm of 5%, which I always feel is difficult, because obviously, local, you know, local districts aren't getting 5% increases, haven't gotten any 5% increases in a long, long time. So then, you know, to bear that burden, we have to, you know, we have to budget for it, and, you know, it does, it is a difficult one in terms of allocating resources. So that's a major factor. Transportation, also a big factor, in that this year is the third and final year of our regular bus contract. So that's expiring this, this June, and we're in the process of putting together our bid, and we'll be going, we'll be going out to bid just after February vacation. It'll be in the newspapers and published online, and, and we'll be seeking bids. So we will see exactly how that comes out, but that's, it's a sizable increase that we're projecting, approximately $285,000. There's a, transportation's been a key area of concern in the state, because transportation providers have had difficulty with the pandemic and not working, you know, having all this investment on their end, and that's, it is a big equipment investment, that's a big portion of their costs, and obviously, not having recouped that because of, you know, the pandemic is, is a concern. And, and it's ultimately showing up in prices of new bids as, as people are, you know, getting bids coming out now. Enrollment, we don't really know, you know, where this is going. We have some ideas of where it might, but, you know, our enrollment is somewhat down. We have more homeschool kids, we have more private school kids, we have more, more kids who didn't register for kindergarten, you know, than we would ever have in another scenario. But we are hopeful that, that, you know, those students will, you know, will be returning, and we expect that, that they will. So we're still planning on, you know, approximately, you know, a similar, similar level of enrollment next year. COVID-19-related costs, this is, you know, we, we just don't know. We don't know what September's going to look like. We don't know if we're going to be running virtuals, virtual schools. We don't know if we're, I mean, probably, who knows? Maybe we're all wearing masks, maybe we're all doing extensive additional cleaning of the buildings for another year, or maybe not. There's, there's a lot of different costs that, you know, have taken place through, throughout this pandemic, and, and they have been supported through, you know, several different grants that have come our way through the federal government. There's a lot of talk about support moving forward. That's great, we need it. Hopefully, it happens. I don't know, and, and I don't think anybody knows for sure if that really will happen. If it doesn't, that's a big problem, and it's not built into this budget. So I don't have virtual academies. I see Dr. Jenkins, you sort of had your hand up there?
Well, my question for you right now, Jim, is whether you and Mr. Kylie, would you like us to wait until the end to ask you questions, or do you want to?
I'm sorry, I should have said that. You can, you know, let's, please.
Okay, so, one question I have is, you have that this bed tuition is increasing 400,000. It goes up about 5% each year. I know the Voke and Aggie tuition often goes up more than 2.5% as well, right? That's another problem. Are we looking at similar rates of increase for our, for our vocational schools for next year?
Yeah, I, I don't have those numbers yet, so I don't, I, I can't give you a good estimate of Voke and Aggie at this point. Last year, the big increase on, on the Aggie side was relating to their capital project.
Right.
So I don't think an additional amount will be increased on their end. The Aggie enrollment is quite low. I, I have it here somewhere, you know, so that, that I don't think is, is a major factor. But, but Voke, I mean, Voke has, you know, a substantial enrollment at this point. I think we expect it to be fairly consistent with what has been in the past, but that doesn't mean that their budget is going to be exactly consistent with what it, where it was in the past, so.
Right, I mean, the problem is, right, is that a lot of the things that are driving our budget increases are not actually under our control.
Yeah.
That's another one of them, so that's what I was curious about.
It is, and I'll talk about, a little about that on the next, on the next slide. It, you know, down towards the bottom of this next slide, I mentioned health insurance. Health insurance is, is always a major factor. The, the cost of health insurance is, you know, a big portion of, of the town's budget. We don't know where that's going yet. Normally, we would, this would be about the time of year when we'd start to get a handle on that. I'm not sure what's going on in the healthcare world right now, but I'm sure nothing, none of it is good. And, and I don't know how that's going to impact this whole process yet. I'm, obviously, it's going to increase. Last year, it was great, and, and was a very minor increase compared to some years, and hopefully, you know, that continues. I can't imagine it in this environment that that could be possible, but, but I don't, I don't know. We shall see, and it's part of why, part of the reason why I wanted to delay the budget presentation a couple of weeks, is that I don't really have a whole lot of information about, you know, where this is going from a town perspective, and, and that's what this, this slide is sort of all about, is normally, I, I have a, a number, you know, an idea. I've talked a lot with the town side, you know, of government, with Mr. McInnes and Mr. Barnes, and, and, you know, they're doing a great job and trying to manage things, and, and we, but, but at this point, there's just so much up in the air. So, so difficult for us to determine, you know, what the support's going to be from the state. We, I was really pleased to see that the governor's budget included an increase in Chapter 70. I thought that was a, a very good sign. I mean, for us, it's $100,000, it's not a lot, it's 1% increase, so, you know, it's not keeping up with any other increase in the world, but it's something, it's not a cut, so I guess we've got to be somewhat pleased with that. The overall increase to the town, you see, there is just under $320,000. So, you know, there's been, I, I thought it would be worse. So now, to, to actually act upon that, the legislature is really going to have to commit to using, you know, to using, I would assume, reserve resources on their end. That's what they did to stem the gap in, you know, in, in 2021, in the 21 budget. I just don't know how willing they're going to be to do that. So, I mean, it's good, good news that the governor did that, I don't know where that's going.
So I have one other question, it's related to sort of both of these slides so far. Typically, our budget is based on previous year enrollment, right? So our budget next year is based on this year enrollment. Has the state held districts harmless for the declines in enrollment associated with COVID? I mean, we know that's happening statewide. The state, is, is the state not factoring it into their calculations?
Wouldn't that make sense, right?
Yeah.
It, that is not what they did.
Okay.
And I will say, since we are a community that the state perceives is, is getting more money in Chapter 70 than we would be entitled to based on the formula, so basically, what I'm saying there is they think that we are wealthy. Since they think that we are wealthy, the decline in enrollment doesn't really hurt us much. So it's $4,000 that it hurt us. Now, usually, we're the ones who get hurt with just about everything, but in this particular case, them deciding to, you know, use new enrollment numbers when, obviously, it's a major issue, and it will, there will be a change to the positive of enrollment numbers next fall, it really hurt other communities much more than us, and their funding, I, I know that they are going to be vocal in trying to advocate for that, for, you know, some reversal, and the legislature certainly has it within their authority to do that. So we'll see what happens, but I, you know, it could mean a little more for us, but it, but if it's only $4,000, then, you know.
I, I would also say, I'm not sure the legislature would consider us wealthy, but I think they might say we're not fully utilizing our taxing capacity, given the levels of wealth in this community, and I would not maybe necessarily disagree with them, looking at our tax rate compared to other communities in the Commonwealth, but that, that is what it is.
Yeah, well, the community, you know, and I don't want to talk too much about Chapter 70 formula, because it's early, a little early for a nap for everybody, but, but, you know, the, the community, the, the state, rather, looks at income in the communities and property value, and, and we've probably had this conversation before, but the property value in Dartmouth is high. There's, there, we're on the coast, and there are a lot, and it's a very large town, one of the largest, and as a result, they think that we're entitled to less money than other communities that you might think are kind of similar to us. So that is what it is, and then, that part of the formula, there's no chance to ever, you know, we're never changing that until, probably never. So we're stuck with that, but, but yeah, so, so that is a factor, but it, the enrollment piece, but it didn't have a, you know, a major, major effect on our overall projected increase at this point. So, let's see here, okay. So I just, I wanted to get here to sort of the meat of the numbers of, of the presentation, and there's a, there's a few key things. On the top two lines, there's the FY21 budget, which is, that's our current budget, that's the current budget that we're operating with and was appropriated at town meeting last June, $45,586,000. Then, based on the work that I explained previously, when we were talking about the budget process, we came up with an FY22 draft budget before considering all of the additional requests from the departments and principals. So basically, talking about salary increases, talking about some special ed increases, talking about that transportation increase, some other minor increases that we have to absorb, we were at 3.58% budget increase, so $47,217,000. And then, we began to look at, you know, we, we had already looked at all of these other things that, you know, are really valid requests from, from our principals, and when we, when we looked at those, we knew, starting at 3.58%, that we would have limited, that was the first page, this is the second page of these, that we would have limited ability to fund these. I mean, we are some, we are realistic and understand that this isn't going to be a great year, and to now have to face this is going to be really challenging. But the things that we really did feel, you know, were absolutely critical, that we, that we need to build into the operating budget were, let's see, the, a, one and a half outreach social workers for the district. So, I mean, if there's ever been a time that we need these people, we need them, and now, and, you know, they're, the, the kids are presenting with, you know, a lot of needs through this, through this pandemic. They had a lot of needs before the pandemic. If you look back at last year's presentation, there were requests for, for this type of help in the district, and we weren't able, always able to fund it, but, you know, we really feel that it's important to move forward with this proposal. So we have currently a half-time social worker at the Cushman School, would propose to make that position full-time, and then, as, as you'll see, as you see through this list, that there's several schools that did ask for social work help, and we've proposed hiring a district social worker who would then be allocated to multiple schools so that we could provide some assistance, you know, to them. The only other thing with, that we built in from all these requests, and, and to be honest, we really didn't have a choice in this one, is a specialized reading program to support students with dyslexia. So it was basically, the Department of Ed has indicated that we have to do this, and we will do it. So we had to, we had to come up with some money to do that. So in total, those three items are about $120,000, about a quarter of a percent, and then bring our overall budget increase to 3.84%. So that's where we are right now with, with our, with our budget, and that's, that's what we're presenting to you today. Any questions on these two slides? Okay, so, yes, Dr. Jenkins?
All right, I was going to let Kathleen go, but I couldn't see her, if she had a question or not. So I will just say that I strongly support the prioritization of social workers here. There's so much data coming out that the kids are not okay, they're not doing well, and I think people really need to understand how important this is. My other sort of question and concern is related to learning gaps, and I know that our teachers and all of our staff are doing the best that they can to provide kids with the best education they can get this year, but we just, we know, right, that, that kids are going to have gaps, whether they're not enrolling in kindergarten, or, you know, they're not engaging, even though we're doing our best to get them engaged, or just the fact that, but being in, there's a reason why kids are in school five days a week, right, because it's good for them. And so I guess, one of the questions I had in looking at this was whether we considered it all, whether we have any CARES money, or whether there's any consideration of doing some stuff in August for kids before school start to sort of get them up to speed, to deal with some of these learning gaps, or whether we considered some extended learning time, again, to address those kiddos that are falling behind. I just think that next, it's a difficult year financially, but it's going to be a really needy year for all of our kids, and I would really like to see us within whatever confines we have, even if it's one-time-only money, in part because, right, fingers crossed, we don't have a global pandemic next year, so if we can do a little bit extra, like in after-school stuff, or in August, in July, whatever, to kind of get these kids back on track, it strikes me as money that would be well invested.
I, I, I think so, and Dr. Gifford, chime in, but I, I think that, you know, what we've talked about is we have school choice here to support things that we might otherwise not be able to do, and we are hopeful that we'll have CARES Act funds, there is CARES Act 2 coming, and then, hopefully, there will be more coming, you know, from the federal government. We do think, I mean, there will be something coming, so, I mean, obviously, that is going to have to, yeah, it's going to have to support those needs. We recognize that those are real.
Okay, thank you.
So this, this slide really breaks down, you know, I guess I'll, I'll start with the overall, for next year, we'd be down four positions from where we are now. You know, we've given it a lot of thought and, and tried to, you know, tried, tried to be, each, each time that we had an opening or, you know, a, a transfer, there were a lot of, there were a lot of moving parts this year in personnel, and, and we hope that, you know, you recognize that we're trying to do more than we ever have, and in this case, we're proposing that we're going to continue to do that with less. So it's a challenge, for sure. So the first two lines on here speak to the outreach social worker, positions that I, that I mentioned on the previous slide, so those would be increases for FY22. We've proposed a, we, as you know, we had a retirement with our Assistant Superintendent, and we are proposing that we eliminate the Director of Teaching and Learning position, and that Ms. Olivera would become the Assistant Superintendent. We, I had a resignation, to make a long story short, it affected a couple of positions, but I had a resignation as a secretarial position, and we shifted things around, and these next two lines are the net result of that, with a decrease of 0.7 positions in our administrative office. We had some other pluses and minuses of teachers and teacher assistants, again, through the, throughout throughout the year, each time there was a retirement or a resignation. These are not, not layoffs. These are all through attrition, just, just so you know. We, so we addressed that at each school as they came up. Maintenance, I've not filled the plumber position. I've not built it into the budget. I think long-term, we have to go back to that. But, but at this point, there's just not the money and I, I didn't do it. And then there's a couple of other district-wide positions there in addition to the, to the social worker and the administrative positions that, that were also necessary throughout this process. For an SLPA, which is a teacher assistant position, and then a part-time addition to a occupational therapist that currently works for us. So the, let's see. The net there, down the bottom, you have the admin, you know, reduction in administration and instruction and in other, for a total of, of four. So, any questions on, on this? Dr. Jenkins?
All right. I'm full of questions today.
It's okay. That's what this is about.
How are we gonna fill our plumbing needs? I mean, I, I assume the plumber wasn't sitting around doing nothing all day.
No, he was busy.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's difficult. You know, he went to a, he went to another district, sort of a promotion job for him. And it's been interesting working without the plumber. In the end, I, I, I think, you know, when we sort of get past this and we have a more normal year, I think I'd be better able to then judge how much, i- i- if, if we're hiring a plumber to do licensed plumbing work. Now, our maintenance guys are really talented guys. They are, you know, at their house, they're not calling a plumber to fix something. Let's face it. They're, you know, they're fixing it themselves. There are some things where we need, you know, a licensed plumber, and we have spent money on that this year. And I, I just want to get a little bit more of an idea of where that's going long-term. So I, I, you know, I'm willing to, we'll struggle with it a little, but I, I, you know, I, I'm willing to struggle with it for a year and, and sort of determine how we're gonna, you know, manage that moving forward. Any other questions on this? So, there's a lot to do. And there's a lot left ahead for this budget. So, you know, we, we've presented you a draft. Obviously, ultimately, it's not a final document, but, you know, someday, hopefully, fairly soon, it will be a more final document. We're presenting today to the budget subcommittee. We then will present to the school committee on the twenty-second, the day after February vacation. So you will have your, your budget books. And Mr. Silva, I'll forward you the information as well. Thanks for joining us today. Sorry, you were, you were cut off at the bottom of my screen there. I didn't see you for a while. But we'll provide Mr. Silva as well, who's representing the finance committee with all that information. Then, you know, the, the, what I didn't put in here, which I should have, the, the school committee will have multiple meetings in which they can deliberate and discuss and, you know, make sure that you're comfortable with supporting this budget before it moves forward to the finance committee and the select board and seeking recommendations from them. So you'll have opportunity to have your say. Then, uh, we, our hope, and we're flexible with this, would be that a public hearing, you know, would be on or about March twenty-second. And, and then followed by a school committee approval on April fifth. We, we have a little bit of flexibility, but the town does need to move forward. And, and so we need to get our budget incorporated into the town budget. And so we have to stick within a meeting, I would say, of, of those timelines, for sure. And then town meeting will be June first. So that'll be our opportunity to ask, oop, I need to cut that off. Well, opportunity to ask for everyone's support in town. And, you know, hopefully, hopefully, we can get it. So i- in the midst of all that, there'll be a lot of work that I need to do with the town side of government to, you know, iron out some of the missing items that I have on this list. Like, I don't really have a financial projection. We don't know what health insurance is. We, I mean, we'll hear more from the state and the feds on grants and support and, and then we'll, you know, so we'll keep you informed throughout that process as circumstances change. We, as Dr. Gifford has always been saying, fluid and flexible, we gotta be in this too. So. And that is the presentation. Are there any questions? Dr. Jenkins?
I will channel my inner Mr. Noon's, looking at this slide. And I will say, I am deeply concerned. I understand our need to meet town deadlines. And I, you know, know that the town has the capacity to do this. I am worried about the levels above us, right? The state and the federal government. I have zero confidence that we're gonna get good numbers from them by our timeline. You know, this is a disadvantage of being a town meeting is that we have to, you know, have such advanced preparation because we don't have a council, right, that can simply vote changes to the budget. But I'm really concerned about, given all the uncertainties, that we're gonna have good information to make good budget requests by this timeline. Well, I know we'll do our part and we'll, we'll do, you will do our best with what we have, but I, I just don't think the state's gonna, gonna make anywhere near here.
I agree. I don't think there's any chance of that. I mean, look, I, I mean, I know that this was a catastrophic event, but look at this past year, what happened. I, I understand. I, I don't know how they, I, I don't know. I don't know how they do it. You know, they're gonna have to make a decision to use a major portion of their reserves to fund this twenty-two budget. So, and the town of Dartmouth's gonna have to consider, you know, their, their tax revenue is not gonna be what it was. So, you know, there's gonna be a lot of considerations on, on this end. And, and they can't really make all those decisions until they hear from the state, too. So it's, it's gonna be a bit of a mess, for sure. Would anyone else like to, like to comment?
The only thing I'll say is just even though the positions that we've seen, that we're not gonna be able to fund, or whatever it might be, I have to give the principals, we're obviously very cognizant of the stressful situation wherein they went bare bones with their requests. And normally, you know, they're trying to put things in that really can take our district from A to Z and, and have it fly. But they, so this was just very bare bones. Like, like we said, they, they understood the situation. So in collaboration, just deciding the social emotional piece, we really needed to push and advocate for that. That's important. While trying to maintain the other positions that we've had this year and not replace some that we didn't replace this whole year as well and get by. So that's my comment.
Does anyone else like to comment?
I have more questions, comments. I'm sorry. So, I, I mean, I do think that those, those social emotional needs are gonna be really great. Would we consider funding that out of CARES dollars if things look really bad at the state and local level? I mean, I just really don't think we can do without it. I look around and it's, it's really bad. It's really bad.
I, I think we would. I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I think we would consider that. The, the difficulty with, you know, funding things that way is, we really should really only look at hiring for a one-year position, if we're gonna consider that. Because, you know, there's, there's no guarantee that we'd ever be able to build it in, in the future. I know this year's not a good time to build it in, but I'm sure next year won't be, and the year after that probably won't be. And, you know, so, so yes, we could do that. But, but I think your, your candidate pool is somewhat, you know, is a different pool if you are a one-year-only position with the understanding that it end at the end of the year. So that's something to consider, too.
Yeah. I, I mean, I would one hundred percent prefer to fund it from recurring revenues and not from one-time revenues. But for me, I would rather fund it with one-time revenues than do without, because I think the needs are so great. I, you know, having served on the finance committee, the idea between recurring revenues and non-recurring revenues has been drilled into my head. But, I mean, desperate times call for desperate measures. We have to get support for our kids next year. And so I feel very strongly about trying to make this recurring, but making this happen regardless of what are, you know, if we, any way we possibly can.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we, we would agree as a group. I, I think the other important thing to note, and, and we didn't talk about this directly, is that right now, for instance, we have a lot of kids being schooled virtually full-time right now, both at the elementary level with staff, with six staff members that are not built into this budget. So if, if we were to, you know, ha- have to in the fall, offer that level of service, which is pretty unclear as to whether we will or not at this point. You know, that's six, six teaching positions just at the elementary level. We then would also want to look at the middle school level in which we've, we've, at this point, because we, we really didn't know how long this was gonna go and what this was gonna entail, we, you know, purchased a software package essentially for the middle school and the, and the high school, you know, to educate kids fully virtually. And, and, you know, we'd, we'd wanna look at that and, and see what that looks like. So that, hopefully, if we do have to do that, there'll be grant funding to support that. Otherwise, I, I don't, I don't know how we're gonna do that. That's gonna be quite a few positions, obviously. So. Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Mr. Silva, I know you're new as our representative of the finance committee. You know, Ms. Hamm has been doing this for a while with us. We, we always, although this is an official school committee budget subcommittee, we, you know, certainly entertain any comments you might have.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. This is so, it's my first time. Obviously, I'm kind of skipping my lay of the land and feel for what's going on. I'm just listening to you guys this time. I, I don't have, you know, more questions than answers as usual. It's like everyone else in town and in the world right now. So.
Great. Yeah. No, Will, and, you know, if you think of anything, or as you start to bring information back to the finance committee, please feel free to reach out to myself and Dr. Gifford and, and, you know, and certainly school committee members. And, and, you know, we'll keep you in the loop as we, as we move forward through this process.
All right, great.
Well, if there's no other, no other questions or comments from anyone, then I'd really just like to thank you all. I, it's, it's gonna be a long process. We know it's gonna be a difficult process. And we just, you know, appreciate your thoughtful comments and, and your consideration.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a great day.
Thanks.
Thank you.